With this amazing book, The Vortex. And oopsie. Let's see, yeah, all good. Let us get started. Today we are starting on page one hundred and eleven. It is section three of the book, the section heading, Hi Lakshmi. The section heading is called Sexuality and the Law of Attraction. Sexuality, Sensuality and the Opinions of Others. That is the section heading. Alright, so um I'm going to read to you the first set apart of the chapter because it really gives the backdrop to our discussion. So Jerry says, "Sex or sexuality seem to be a sensitive topic in that it evokes guardedness and strong opinions from many who can contemplate it. My first experience with anything remotely related to sexuality turned out very badly when a little girl and I were playing in a wooden box when we were about two years old." That must have been pretty impactful for him to remember something that happened to him when he was two years old, right? I mean, um how many of us remember things that happened when we were two or three years old? Um, I know I remember two or I have two or three memories from that age um that I remember extremely clearly, but for the most part, we don't remember things that happened then. So this must have had a huge impact. And when something has a huge impact, it becomes part of our belief system. So Jerry says, "A little girl and I were playing in a wooden box when we were both about two years old. We got caught with our panties off and we were both severely punished." Now, can you imagine the um how that would have stuck, the punishment part of it linking that to just playing together? Um, not a very comfortable thing to have happen. Alright, um so then Jerry says, "Also as a child, I remember hearing my mother arguing with my father about sex. She told him that she had her three children, she was not interested in having sex with him, and he should find some other woman if it was important to him." And then later, I remember as still very young children, the little boys and girls I knew, and I were all having different sorts of sexual experiences with one another. But by that, by the time I reached the age of actual sexual maturity, I guess because of the powerful stigma around the topic of sex, my concerns and fears and inhibitions were so strong that I would do just about anything to avoid the topic. It was a long time for me before my sexual barriers went down or were resolved and I was able to move into happy sexual experiences. I would like to hear your perspective about the sexual aspects of physical human beings to perhaps clarify the subject and leave people feeling better about it. So that's the backdrop, folks. Now, as Abraham answers, the discussion first goes into religion and an understanding of God. And um as I was visiting this this morning, preparing to be here with you, I went back to when I first read the book and all the thoughts that went through my head at that point in time. So the first part of this chapter actually looks at our God concept. And that's where Abraham focuses because the whole premise Abraham is holding here is that it is our misunderstanding of what God is which results in our misunderstanding of sexual experiences. And so that's why I'm giving you this background. Now Abraham says, "As children, you're often met with adults who have lost their connection with their own sense of value or well-being." And the reason this is important is because uh the the theme here, the theme that Abraham is talking about is that rules. This is very interesting. Rules are made by people who have lost their connection with Source. Rules, let me say that again. Rules are made by people who have lost their connection with Source. So rules are fear-based. Rules are made from fear, from a place of fear to prevent something that you think is bad from happening. Well, if you're coming from a place of fear, then you're pretty low on the emotional scale, right? And rules are a reflection of fear-based thinking. I'm gonna today reveal to you a story that I don't usually talk about. I think because it reveals how stupid I was, that's why I don't talk about it. But I'm going to tell you the story today. So as a lot of you know, that I was brought up in um a Muslim country, in a Muslim family, but went to Catholic school and it was a convent school. It wasn't just a Catholic school, it was a convent. So I had these diverging experiences or schools of thought. Uh but there's a part in my journey when I was uh pushing against and then there was a part of my journey where I gave in. I completely gave in to my mother succeeded in brainwashing. And the brainwashing was just do what mommy says. Mommy is always right. Just don't debate it, don't question it. If mommy says it's right, it's right, just do it. So guess what, guys? I think I was eleven years old. Yes, I was eleven years old, either ten or eleven. And my parents at that point in time moved to Iran and we were living in Tehran. Um, now I was coming from a convent school, remember? I was coming from a convent school. I was coming from a convent school, I discovered later because my parents didn't think that co-ed was a good system of education. But when we went to Tehran, guess what? All the schools were co-ed. My parents looked and looked and looked and as a result of their looking, I actually stayed at home for six months and didn't attend school for, I think it was six months. Could have been more or less, I don't remember. But a couple of months anyway, I was very happy, trust me. I did not attend school because my parents were busy trying to find an all-girls school. And then eventually they gave up and they said, okay, she's going to end up missing a whole year of school if we take this long getting her back into a school environment. So finally, they admitted me to school and it was a co-ed school. Now, before starting school, my mother had this, I don't even know how many sessions of lecturing me about proper conduct in a co-ed school. And do you know what she told me? So first of all, before I tell you what she told me, I have to tell you that I was in that school. I think for three years, two years at least. Minimum two years. I think three, but maybe it was two. I don't remember. So now having, now that you know that I was in that school for at least two years, I'm going to tell you what my mother said to me. She made a rule and I was to obey the rule and I was a good little girl at that point in time. She had broken me in, I did what mommy told me to do. The rule was, you're going to a co-ed school, you are not going to talk to a boy. You're not, you're not allowed to talk to boys at all. That's the rule. Oh my God, how stupid was I? I never talked to a boy. Two years of, maybe three, two or three years. If a boy talked to me, I looked the other way. Can you believe that? Yeah, I did that. I actually did that. That's how, that's how a good little girl I was. I did that and I think that because I followed whatever my mother said so exactly, that is the reason why my why, why did this happen to me was such a big why when when my husband strangled me. That that was the reason why I, that question was like, why? I've always done what I was told to do. Perfect little girl. Obeyed every single rule. Can you imagine? I never talked to a single boy in my school. Forget about my class. They would all get together. Boys and girls, they would all get together and and uh for activities or lunch or whatever and I would go and be alone because I I didn't want to be clubbed in with the boys because then I would have to talk to them. Mommy said, don't talk to the boys. So I didn't talk to the boys. She wasn't looking. Mommy wasn't looking, but I didn't talk to the boys. So the reason I'm telling you this is because she made a rule and and I mean, that was a fear-based rule if ever there has been a fear-based rule. And she made that rule because of exact fear that Abraham is talking about over here. She had this concept of what was right and what was wrong and she had decided that she didn't want to risk it with her daughter. So and I don't tell the story because you know, I feel really stupid telling the story. But children will listen to all sorts of things. So if I could do that, that just makes me think how far the programming can go. It just makes me understand that as parents, we have so much power. I'm a parent. Parents, we have so much power. Right? And I understand when Abraham talks about fear in this context. Fear, that fear is what leads to the making of rules. You make rules because you want to prevent something bad from happening. That's where all rules come from. My mother's rule came from her fear. She didn't want me to engage with boys because she was afraid that that was the age of puberty now coming on and you know, uh what if, what if, what if? So to prevent that, she made a rule. And you know, like here's the thing, it can work both, it can work in good ways as as well as bad ways because if you understand that a person can have so much self-discipline that everyone else is doing one thing and you do something different. Well, that applies to good things as well as bad things. Every if, just imagine if everyone in my class was engaged in smoking or drugs or whatever and I wasn't participating. Now that puts it in a totally different light, doesn't it? So at the end of the day, it's a decision that you make. I made the decision to listen to my mother. What my mother thought was way more important to me than what everyone in the school thought. Because do you think that my friends or my classmates didn't ask me to come and join them? They did. After a few times asking, they gave up eventually, but they did. They asked me. Right? So let's go back here. So now Abraham says, what Abraham says on page one hundred and twelve is all rules. Rules are made by those who are out of alignment with their broader perspective. It is the last sentence of the first paragraph. "All rules and laws are made by those who are out of alignment with their broader perspective." The second important thing that Abraham says in the same paragraph is that all the rules that are made tend to hinge on the economic impact of the time. It's economics that leads to the making of rules. Think about it. So that people don't get sued, so many rules are made. That's all economics. Right? So your fear that unwanted things will come is what will make unwanted things come. Rules cannot prevent it. In fact, rules put more attention on it. Don't do this, don't do this, don't do this. Why you're saying, don't do this, don't do this, don't do this? Where is your attention? It's on the thing that you think is harmful. So you're actually, by giving it attention, you are bringing it to you. You're not pushing it away. It's the opposite effect of what you want to achieve. So Abraham says, "It is always true that the harder you push against what you do not want, the more of what you do not want comes into your experience." And then they go on and now they start talking about religion and they say that um the subject of sexuality comes from people of various religious groups who believe that God has spoken to humans and laid out rules. Whereas what Abraham is saying is, humans make the rules, God has not made the rules. So um that's the third paragraph, the last part of the third paragraph is what I'm going to read out to you just now. The very idea that what I have received is correct and what you or others have received is wrong holds you in the place of resistance to the very source from which you claim to have received it. Read that carefully. So the very thing, when you say, I'm right because I've received it from Source and you are wrong, soon you can say, I'm I'm right for myself and that would be totally okay. But soon as you say, I am right and that other person is wrong, by judging the other person as being wrong, you immediately come down the emotional scale. And when you are low on the emotional scale, you're not in alignment. So how can any good come? No good can come to you from that place. And so then Abraham says, "This is leading us to the most important flawed premise of all, which is that there is a God who having considered all things has come to a final and correct conclusion about everything." And what Abraham is saying is, that is not correct. Alright, any questions at this point in time? Anyone have a question? Okay, let's move on. One second. Um, okay. So then Abraham says, "Man has a distorted view of himself and of God." And then they say, you can, it doesn't matter what name you give. The premise that mankind has is that God is this entity that is perfect and is no longer evolving. And that this entity has decided what is right and what is wrong and knows what is best. And this is very controversial, but what Abraham is saying is, that is not true. Because that entity that we call God is a collective consciousness consisting of all of us and is always expanding. So it's not static. That which we call God is growing. So let me read from the book. Abraham says, "This inaccurate conclusion that Source, no matter what name you want to give it, is no longer expanding, but instead stands at a place of completion or perfection. Demanding your physical compliance with its narrow rules not only defies the laws of the universe, but then requires another flawed premise and then another and another to try to prop it up." And um so much as we are evolving and growing, what Abraham is saying here is that that which we call God or Source is also evolving and growing because the universe is always growing. Alright, so then then Abraham brings up a point. And and they say that in religion, you are told that keeping of some rules is going to bring you blessings and the breaking of other rules is going to bring you punishment. And then they say, another flawed premise is that you will not know the results until you make your transition. So false premise number fifteen on page one hundred and thirteen, "You cannot know while you are still in your physical body, the true reward or punishment for your physical actions. Your reward or punishment will be shown to you after your physical death." And Abraham says, "It doesn't make sense because they tell you, do this and then you will be blessed and they tell you, don't do this because then you will be punished, but you see people doing those things and those people are flourishing." And I always had a problem with this. I always had a problem with this as a child because I would see my parents working really hard and not having much and I would see other people who were not working hard and were much better off. So it didn't compute in my mind. If hard work was the answer, then why isn't the answer coming? And that's when you're told, oh, you will get the answer after you die, you know, like you've got to die to find out. And Abraham is saying, uh-uh, that's not the case. So Abraham says, "What feels like love is and what feels like hate is not love." Those are very important words. Because if you're not feeling love, then you're not in a place of alignment and understanding that is key to to progressing, to to having a happy life. Right? Alright, so then that leads us to page one hundred and fourteen and flawed premise number sixteen. "By gathering data about the manifestations or results of the way people of earth have lived and are living, we can effectively sort them into absolute piles of right and wrong. And once those determinations have been made, then we then have only to enforce those conclusions and once we get everyone to agree with our determinations and more important, once we get them to comply with them, we will then have harmony on earth." Mercedes, you have your hand up. Go ahead, unmute yourself.
Yes, um, thank you. So I mean, this really got a little bit of confusion on me about this. Oh, it's a flawed trend about punishment.
Hmm hmm. What?
It's not true. It's a flawed premise, right?
It's a flawed premise, yes, that there will be punishment, that there will be punishment after death is a false premise, yes, that's what Abraham is saying.
I'm sorry.
No, it's all good.
I mean, okay.
No, no, it's all good. If you want clarification, always ask. Jump in. Okay, awesome. So um law of attraction literally is like a boomerang. It will come right back to you now in in this life. It's not going to wait to catch up with you in a different life. So whatever vibration you're sending out, the results of that vibration are coming back to you in this life. And when you make your transition, all of it goes away. Why? Because all your negative beliefs go away. You do not hold on to your negative beliefs when you make your transition because when you make your transition, you return to a place of love. All negative beliefs exist low on the emotional scale. At a place of love, there is no negative belief. When you make your transition, you go high up on the emotional scale, all your negative beliefs disappear and you turn into pure love. And from that pure place, you don't hold on to any negativity at all. So any negative that is going to happen, happens in this lifetime and this is the premise on which manifestations take place because if you are not in a place of love, your manifestations will tell you that you're not in a place of love. So all you have to do is to switch back and say, got the message? Going to return back to love? Find something to love? There are times when women will come and ask me, young women will come and ask for dating advice and you know, they're looking for a relationship and basically when you're looking for a relationship, I find that women who are looking for a relationship are looking for two things. One, they are looking for company and they're looking for someone who loves them. And number two, they're looking for having babies, making babies. Those are the two, two needs. That's that's why they're looking for a relationship. Where women who don't have these two needs, they're not looking for relationships. So I often tell them, I often tell these girls who come to me for advice, why don't you adopt a puppy or a cat? Because the thing is, you you, what are you looking for? You are looking for someone who loves you and someone that you can love. But you've got to put yourself in those shoes first in order for that to happen. Right? So when you are able to give love, even if it is to a puppy or a cat, now you are doing the thing that will bring you what you want. Because because you are receiving love, nobody loves you more than a puppy. I mean, come on. Nobody loves you more than your kitty cat. So you now become the recipient of love. You are no longer alone. You have a living being who is loving you and you are loving them. So now that need neediness goes away. When the neediness goes away, now it must come. You see, because the neediness is the attachment to the outcome. As long as you're attached to the outcome, it cannot come. So when you become someone who is giving openly of your love and receiving love, now it must come. It's the same thing that happens when people who want to get pregnant and have a baby, adopt a baby. Then the baby comes because now there is no attachment to the outcome because you already have the baby. Right? So in our heads, it's about dealing with the obstacles that we have in our heads. And and really, that is what if you're coaching with someone, that's what a coach will should help you to do is to get rid of the cobwebs in your head that are getting in your way towards moving forward. Because you obviously either can't see them or don't have the ability to deal with them on your own. So then just do it. Because the advice, here's here's what, here's what people need to understand. People need to understand that when you go to a a coach or not even a coach, if you go to someone and you're asking them for advice, the advice that is flowing to you through them is coming from source. It's just that you can't receive it yourself because you have resistance. So when the answer comes, follow the guidance. Follow the guidance that is coming to you because the guidance that is coming to you through your coach or advisor is coming to you from source. It's coming to you through another person because you have too much resistance and can't receive it yourself. And that is one of the biggest, most valuable things that a coach does for you. Is to receive the guidance on your behalf. Alright, so let's keep moving on over here. So Abraham says that this flawed premise that you can put people in, categorize people as being right or wrong is incorrect because our pre-birth intention was to come and play with variety. The earth, earth plane is all about diversity and variety. So Abraham is saying there is no ending to the expansion of God and physical human participation cannot be separated from that expansion. And then they say, the most destructive part of humans confusion about their connection with God or source is that in their need to find and defend their values, they must push against the values of others. Because when you push against the values of other people, you go down the emotional scale. That is not helpful. It will not help you to sort things out. And that leads to flawed premise number seventeen, which is only very special people like the founder of our group can receive the right message from God. And all other messages from all other messengers are therefore incorrect. And that is, that is a flawed premise because all of us have the same ability to connect with source. All of us have the same ability to receive answers. Resistance, it's not the person, it's the resistance that a person has that prevents the answers from coming. It's not about the person, it's about the resistance and resistance is artificial because resistance is disbelief. It's a belief, it's a negative belief. It's a negative belief. But unless you do the work to let go your negative beliefs, then they will continue to get in your way. And sometimes, sometimes it's just not, you're not in a place where you can, you can do the work on your own. Because like I always use this analogy is that there are times when I've misplaced something, but I haven't misplaced it, it's right under my nose literally, but I can't see it. So I have to ask someone else to come and take a look for me. I asked my assistant. I can't find this piece of paper, can you look? Because I can't see it and she finds it like that. Because it's right there, it is in front of me, but I can't see it. And that's, that's the thing that happens when you get help. Because you've got to understand that if you are not moving forward, if you are not achieving the results that you want to achieve, that means that something is getting in the way. You do have resistance and you're not able to see that resistance. So then ask someone else to look instead of you looking. Because you're obviously not able to see it. That's if you could see the obstacle and have the ability to deal with the obstacle, you would deal with it and you would continue your journey. You wouldn't be stuck sitting there still asking for it. Just imagine that you're on a road trip and there is a big rock in the middle of the road. Now, if you can't see the rock, what's going to happen? You're going to crash into it. Right? Because you can't see it. So then ask someone else to see. And if you can see the rock, then wouldn't it be nice if you got off the car and were able to move it? But if you can't move it, then you've got to ask someone else to move it for you to help you move it. And that's what happens when you work with a coach. The coach helps you to see what you can't see and remove things that are on your path that you can't remove on your own. And I know that, you know, it seems like I should be able to do this. It's easy. It's just a thought. I can change my thought. And that is a very good thing and you should absolutely be able to do it. And the universe will send you proof to know whether or not you are actually doing it because your manifestations will change. Right? Our manifestations are indications. Alright, so Abraham says at the bottom of page one hundred and fourteen, the most destructive part of humans confusion about their connection with God or source is that in their need to find and defend their values, they must push against the values of others. But pushing against the values of others takes us down the emotional scale and prevents the very thing that we want. And then Abraham says, people believe that only special people can receive the answers. That's not the case. Every one of us is special. And here's the thing, being a coach, I will tell you something really important. Because I am a coach, I can tell you something really important. And that is, I can coach you because I can see the obstacles on your path that you can't see. And I can, I have the strength to remove the obstacles on your path, but there are obstacles on my path that I can't see, that I don't have the energy to remove, which is why I need a coach. See? Well, every everybody needs a teacher. Everybody is learning from someone else. I am learning. Why am I still reading books? Why would I still need to listen to other people? Why would I still listen to Abraham? Why would I listen to other teachers if I was complete? I am not complete. Every one of us is moving forward. Every one of us is learning how to remove the cobwebs in our heads. Everybody has cobwebs. Right? So we can, all of us can see each other's cobwebs, but sometimes we can't see our own. Right? Because I mean, look at it this way, um, the first time you bring a beautiful decoration for your house, you're something beautiful. You put it somewhere on your wall. Let's say you bring a new wall hanging, you put it on the wall. You love it, you appreciate it, you take pictures of it, you share it with all your friends. People come to your house, everyone sees it for the first time, everybody loves it. After a while, when it's been there, you stop seeing it. So the the same rule applies to resistance or a negative belief. You have it, then you get used to having it, you can't even see that it's there. Just now during the pandemic, there were people who were pushing against wearing a mask and people who were wearing a mask. Because I was working in um a really busy environment, the rule at the bank, at the branch, at the financial institution where I was working was that we have to wear our masks every day, all day. You cannot remove it. That's the rule. It's a rule because to keep other people safe, to keep you safe and we have customers coming in and out, they need to feel safe. So in the beginning, we hated it. But then after a while, we just got so used to it, we didn't even know that we were wearing it. We didn't even, it it became part of, you know, just you just become used to. Human beings are so versatile, it's so easy for us to become used to things. We are so versatile. We don't even realize that there's a weight. And so then I was so used to it that I didn't even realize when I could take it off, I didn't realize that I should take it off. Because it just, I was so used to wearing it. And think about it, isn't that what happens to people who wear earrings? You you don't, you don't feel them. If you wear a watch, you don't feel it. Right? You don't feel it anymore. So the same thing happens with beliefs. They become part of us, we don't even feel that they are there. So I'll tell you a little story. Um, when I was coming to Canada, um, I hadn't seen my mother for a couple of months. And she met me at the airport, she came to see me off and I met her, I hadn't seen her for a couple of months. And I noticed, because I hadn't seen her for a couple of months, I noticed that there was something off about her. Something wasn't quite right. So I spoke to my brother, I said, something's wrong with mom, you know, like what's what's up with her? And he said, no, there is nothing wrong with her. And I said, well, it's because you see her every day, you think there's nothing wrong. But I haven't seen her for a while, I can see that something is wrong. We should find out what's going on. So that's the thing, even even your loved ones cannot see because they are so used to seeing you a certain way. That's why when we go to someone like a doctor or someone, they are able to see past because they are not used to seeing you. Right? So they can see things that you've stopped seeing. And so, um, you've got to remember that everyone has the ability to see, but sometimes that ability becomes clouded. And when it becomes clouded, you should be open to watching and and obtaining that information from wherever it comes. Because remember that if something is off, the universe is sending you a message. If something is off, the universe is trying to guide you. If something is wrong, the universe is trying to guide you. And if you're, if the universe can't catch your attention, two things happen. If the universe can't catch your attention, something bigger will happen. You know, it's like, it's like children, when they're trying to catch your attention, they'll do something and you don't pay attention, then they'll do something again and then they'll do something again. They'll keep trying to catch your attention. The universe does that as well. And sometimes when you're not listening, the message comes through someone else. So Abraham says, a basic feeling of unworthiness due to the lack of connection with source is at the root of the confusion around the subject of sexuality. A basic feeling of unworthiness due to the lack of connection with sources at the root of the confusion around the subject of sexuality. It is a rare human who has found what he believes to be appropriate way to behave, who has then also mastered the self-discipline to behave that way. So what is Abraham saying here? Abraham is saying your impulses are guiding you. Guidance is coming in the form of impulses, but you curb your impulses because you listen to the peanut gallery. So you curb your natural instincts. So then Jerry asks another question. Jerry says, so what is natural for me? I remember as years went by that I always wanted to understand not only what is natural, but what might go against the higher laws. So basically what Jerry is saying is, has source made any rules about sexuality? For instance, as I observed or read about cultures around the world, it seemed like everyone, no matter how primitive or how supposedly advanced, had taboos and rules which controlled the newer people coming in regarding sex. And so I wondered if we bring any of that from our higher knowing or from our inner beings. Abraham says, no taboos or rules are coming from your inner being or from your higher knowing or from non-physical, but instead they are the product of your physical vulnerability. Without exception, every law, religious or secular, comes from a perspective of lack. From a position of trying to protect or guard. And that is where we started our discussion today when we were talking about the fact that all rules are made from a place of fear. The fear of something going wrong is what instigates people to make a rule in the hope that they will prevent that negative thing from happening. So then Abraham says, from your perspective of lack, from your concern that you may be doing something wrong, from your concern that has been fostered within you from those who have gone before, you are, most of you, in a place of great confusion and not very much joy. So it's all the rules that have been made that confuse the issue. And so when we strip that away, the next heading on page one hundred and sixteen is sexuality is guided by impulses, not laws. So then Jerry says, okay, so there are no rules from non-physical dimension telling us how to behave sexually here in physical form. And so when we are born into our physical bodies, we then come knowing And so when we are born into our physical bodies, we didn't come knowing any rules because we weren't sent with them. Is that why children are so unguarded and behave in ways that adults see as too loose or too careless? And is that why adults then feel a need to rein them in or control them? A child, a baby doesn't know or pay any attention to the fact that they are naked until adults tell them. And make them conscious. Right? So Abraham is saying you were not born into your physical body, holding the memory of lists of right and wrong. Because those lists do not exist, but you were born with an effective guidance system. And we know what that guidance system is. Because we know about the emotional scale, that guidance system is basically the emotional scale. What feels good is good, what doesn't feel good is not good. Now. At the level of a baby who has not yet adopted beliefs. Then it's pure guidance. But once you've started incorporating beliefs inside you. Then a lot of your guidance is not coming to you from source, but it's coming to you from your beliefs. Cause you can't, you're guided by your beliefs. And that's why so, sometimes you feel bad. You feel, it feels better to stay with your beliefs than to break away from them. That's why we have to do the work slowly to change our belief systems. Because it does not feel good to break away from them. Right? So Abraham says you were not born into your physical body, holding on to lists of right and wrong. There were no lists, but you had a guidance system. And that guidance system. Is accurate unless it is affected by the beliefs that you hold. Um. I'm, I'm reminded of a story from Lakshmi that, uh, Lakshmi brought up. And I don't remember if it was in this group or another group, but Lakshmi, I'm just gonna use that as an example. Um. About someone, let's say that someone feels that. If an invitation is given, coming on time is the right way to behave. And that, you know. You should always be on time, or you should let your host know that you're going to be late. Right? So now think about this person who has this belief. The person who has this belief. Is going to feel uncomfortable if they are late and they don't call the host. Whereas a person who doesn't have the belief is not going to feel bad. Right? So now what's happened is that the person's belief. Is now influencing whether or not they will feel good. They will only feel good if they act in accordance with their belief system. They will not feel good if they act outside of their belief system. In order to accept a different thing, they have to change their belief system. So in this case, when the guest did not call the host to let them know that they were going to be three hours late. The host had to change their belief system. Otherwise they would keep feeling bad. Right? So how, whether we feel good or bad is influenced by the beliefs that we have. And that is what makes it so interesting. From my point of view as a teacher, it makes it really interesting. But from the point of view of us trying to practice law of attraction, it makes it super confusing. Do you see the confusion there? Yeah. Right? So, so this is, this is why people stumble and fall and, oh my god. Oh my god, I have made tons of mistakes. If I, I can, I can write many books about the mistakes that I've made. In using law of attraction. Because what we forget when we use this method of. What feels good is good, what feels bad is bad, when we use this method of making a decision. We forget that our belief systems have something to do with it as well. And so then I, I teach you in the unlimited group, I teach you. That's where the affirmation comes from, I am unlimited, I can have be or do anything I want. I teach you that if you have any type of thought that limits the possibilities. Then you have a choice to make, you can either give up the thought. Give up the thought, meaning change it, or you stay with it. Right? But you won't feel good unless you do some work. Either you go with the thought and that feels good, or you have to change the thought in order to feel good. How do you decide? You decide by asking yourself which one is limiting me. The one that is limiting me is the one that I have to let go. Because I want to be unlimited. That's how you decide. So just, just saying, oh, I, I should always feel good, I'm gonna do that thing that feels good. So just now it feels like I should take a baseball bat and bash that person's head in. It feels good just now, Zara, do I have permission to do it? No, you don't. No, you don't. Because what are you doing? Is that a, I, is that a limited thought or an unlimited? How is that limiting you? Right? If you want to be unlimited, if you want to be unconditionally loving. Then you can't take a baseball bat and beat up someone, because that's limiting you. You're not acting from a place of love. Even though it feels good. So you see, it's not always about what feels good, you, there is a context to it. There's a context to it. So this is why people make so many mistakes in practicing law of attraction. Because it seems logical and it seems simple, but it's not. It is not. And those of you who have interacted with me in one-on-one coaching sessions know that. You know that. It's not that simple. Cause it's about finding those things that are getting in your way and stripping them down. Talking about them and stripping them down. Because if you don't strip them down, they will always show up as hurdles along your path. Cause you cannot feel good unless you go with that be- belief system. Right? So that's why it's a little bit more complicated than it appears to be. But here's the thing, once you deal with your negative beliefs. Once you have dealt with your negative beliefs and you really start understanding the difference between. A negative thought and a positive thought and. You are aware, you, you have, you start becoming aware of how you're thinking your thoughts. And you've dealt with some of your negative beliefs, now practicing law of attraction is so easy. Now it's smooth running. So it does take work. But after you get over the hump. It's smooth sailing and really, really easy. Alright. So, um. So Abraham is saying you have your impulses come from your guidance system. And so listen to that perspective. And I'm adding on top of that, that you not only have to listen to what feels good and what feels bad. You als- you have to do it in the context of what is unconditional love. Only then will that feeling good or feeling bad work. Because sometimes anger feels good. Right? Sometimes anger feels good. Alright, um. So then Abraham says, there is not only one guidance list handed down from source for all, but individual guidance. For all physical beings in all points in time and space and regarding all situations. And where we are coming from in saying, in making this statement is that we respect all the holy books. And you know, we, we respect them, but what Abraham is saying is that you have guidance outside of that. Because you have your own individual, um. Connection and guidance from source. So then in, in closing, Abraham says that you have to remember that. The variety of life and the various different ways in which people behave. Adds to the balance and well-being of the planet. Even if they are doing things that you don't approve of, that you don't agree with. That is still adding to the balance and well-being of the planet, why? Because it's leading to expansion, that's why, it's leading to growth. And so we don't need to control anyone else, so right at the bottom of page one hundred and seventeen. The ending paragraph there, the need to control others always stems from a basic misunderstanding of the laws of the universe. And the role that you have intended to play with others with whom you share your planet. But there is another very big flawed premise that arises here, and that is. By fretting out the undesirable elements in our society, we can eliminate them. And what Abraham is saying is that you can never eliminate contrast. Because there will always be people who want to do things differently. And we are at the end of our time commitment. If anyone has a question, I am more than happy to address it, otherwise I'm going to close the call. So Zoom, people on Zoom, did you have any questions? That's right Rochelle, you give up your belief system and then you feel good. Otherwise you have to stay within your belief system. Anyone over here have a question? Yes, Lakshmi, go ahead.
Not a question, I just wanted to say that, that clarified my previous question about that.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Alright, anyone else have a question? No? Alright then, love you all lots, have a super fantastic rest of the day, bye for now.
Thank you.
Bye.
Recording stopped.
Alright, people on Facebook, love you all lots, take care, bye for now.